We can't hear you guys if you can hear us.
Even if the computer is unmuted, you might need to hit the button on the microphone.
Now?
There you go.
We're all good. Everybody in Zoom land hear us? All right, we can hear you. All right, Randy, would you restart, please?
So anyway, this morning when I went into the office, little after seven, we had no heat. So I have to walk around. And the furnace boiler room was water on the floor. So I waited until Sheldon came in, what we called Nidos. So, you know, it came right up and took care of us. So we don't want to know is because it's going to eventually get a little costly. So what they found was there was a hot water circulator had a leak which dripped onto the low water cutoff, causing it to burn out, which shuts off the furnace. He had a circulator with him. He was able to replace that. It was not, they did not have the low water cutoff. So they have to order that. But in the meantime, they were able to bypass that. So we eventually got heat. That's one. So it's going to get costly. While I was there, I had them also look at our oil tank inside the garage because of the lakes are getting quite rusty. The stuff's after them. What happened? He looked at it and someone else came and looked at it. They're recommending that we get an oil tank. And that's going to be roughly around $2,000. So they said that we could probably get by right now with being like experienced sometime in the spring. So right now it's set for me. So just letting you know that.
There's chairs there? So anybody who's standing can, there's one chair here. Laura, you want to take that one? There's one down between Mike and. Okay. All right. Is that it for your comments? Thank you for, thank you for the update.
Yes.
Other comments, Sarah?
This is also Police Department Business. Two letters were received by Randy commending Officer Samuel Morris in a situation, I'm not going to read both of them into the record. I'll read the shorter one, which came from the Office of the Sheriff from Ludlow, Mass. Would like to take this opportunity to commend Dover Police Department Senior Patrol Officer Samuel Morris. On February 12th, a longtime member of my staff spoke with Officer Morris regarding a wellness check within the Dover PD jurisdiction. Officer Morris should recognize not only his professionalism, but more importantly, his ability to present himself with authority, while at the same time listen to the needs and concerns of those involved in domestic violence events. Whether within the role of PD, Chief of Police or Sheriff of the Hampton County Sheriff's Office, one of our primary roles is the safety and security of those in our communities. Is with gratitude and appreciation, Officer Morris conducted himself with consideration and compassion for both my staff member and her family. Here in Hampton County Sheriff's Office, we live by our motto of community dedication to excellence and the charity that Officer Morris embodies the very foundation of this standard. The other letter we received is directly from the staff person who spoke with Officer Morris, which is a longer letter, so I'm not going to read that into the record. But I wanted to recognize and applaud that behavior, the actions taken by one of our officers.
And those letters will go in his personal file. Very good. Congratulations on behalf of the whole board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for good service to our community. Anything else?
We got questions.
Yes. Mark?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Travis and the road crew. Last time I was, I met one of your meetings, I asked whether there could be some clearing done at the junction of Valley View and Ellis Brook. And Travis and his crew went ahead and did that, and it makes a huge difference. So I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you Travis and the road crew. Eric?
I had a bear's crossing homeowner stop into my office yesterday to address a situation that has arisen at the parking lot for the crosstown trailhead on Handle Road, where we have a group of van lifers who have been occupying the parking lot every weekend and basically turning it into a small campground. They have like a whole setup that they bring and they start fires and they camp at the trailhead. So wanted to give you guys the heads up that we will be purchasing signs that say, you know, no camping, no fires. And by the time those come in and we hang them up, probably by the next meeting, we need to have a conversation about how you would like Randy and his patrol officers to be enforcing those signs.
Okay. So when do you think the signs will be here, Eric?
We will be ordering them ASAP, but I really don't, Randy and I spoke this morning and feel that we need to have a discussion about how they should be enforced. And I feel like that may be an agenda item and not necessarily just a mention in public comments. So, you know, within the next two weeks, we get the signs, we make the decision on how Randy and his officers can enforce them, and then we can hang those immediately.
Okay. Joe?
What are the signs going to say?
Basically, no overnight park or no overnight camping or parking and no fires.
So no time?
I can, well, I have, so I have yet to order the signs, right? We have, this is the first we're talking about this. So if you'd like it to have a set time to say this time to this time, we can absolutely do that. Basically, I'm trying to avoid this. It's a very slippery slope to let this happen on any of our properties. So if it's, if it's found out that it can happen on them, then it's going to start happening elsewhere. So we need to just kind of squish it before the cows get out of the barn.
Sarah, if I could suggest dust to dawn?
Okay.
I, I don't suggest dust to dawn. I'd suggest from nine PM because a lot of people hate
I, I.
Which is fine, just nine o'clock.
This is not an agenda item. And it is something that we do need to have a public discussion about. So if, if we need to do it before our next meeting, which is the 15th, we may have to have a special meeting. Because if it may impact your ordering of the signs. So, and because it's not an agenda item, it should be warned. So there is public input on. So are we prepared to have a special meeting?
Sure.
No, I am not going to have a special meeting for this. I won't personally do that. But my second thought is what is in our zoning or bylaws right now about parking and parking lots? Do we even have?
Nothing in the zone.
Do we have anything?
Not the, Andy?
There is some stuff in there about camping. And, and you can't camp on town property, your own property, maybe. Parking area, National Forest you can camp on, Town Forest you can camp on. But the parking area would be an issue. The parking area would be an issue. And travel homes are addressed in the zone. Tabby might have something to say about it.
So I really do think that this is something people need, can't, we just can't shoot from the hip from tonight.
Not saying shoot from the hip. I'm saying we could order the signs because camping is not allowed. And then we can authorize or talk to the police for now until our next two week meeting that whatever time we decide on tonight, they, they need to be off the premise. It's obviously can't part, you cannot camp there overnight. We already know that, correct? So we just have to come up with a time and then we can discuss it and bring it up at a public meeting to set up a time for that.
What's the rest of the? Dan?
Can you camp during the day? Was it just say no camping, no fires? Be simple with no times?
So, you know, I'd have to read the bylaw. This, I don't want to say too much without having the bylaw right in front of me. It might be that it's, it's recreational vehicle camping that's addressed in the bylaw. And, you know, hiking backpacking camping. I don't know, but it's a good thing to think about.
I think we do need to look into it. And before we make any potentially any signs even. So Eric?
Yeah, so I was just trying to get on top of it. So absolutely, Andy and I can dig into the the rules that are already in place and kind of work off of that. We can make it an agenda item for the next meeting and have the whole conversation all at once. I apologize for kind of taking things off course there.
But in the interim, is this going to be allowed to continue for the next two weeks?
Without signage, I don't know that we have a leg to stand on.
Kind of disagree with you on that. I'll disagree in public that we don't have a sign that says it's okay to stay there overnight. So I don't see why we can't enforce whatever we find. And if they're camping and having open fires after 10 o'clock, that the police can't, can't stop by and say, there's no, whatever. So that's my opinion.
Do, Eric, do we know how long this has been going on?
It's, it's been a few weekends, at least. The gentleman who stopped into my office, I had him email me the photo of kind of the vans set up in the parking lot. The biggest concerns, you know, obviously is we don't want to, we don't want to let it get out of hand. We don't want to be taking up that parking lot for people who are actually trying to use the outdoor recreation and not just kind of using that as like a second home. And then this gentleman also said that on numerous occasions, he's had to go down there and clean up trash after those weekends that has been left by the people staying in the parking lot.
Are these camper vans or they?
So they're modified transit vans, basically. It's the new thing. It's the new tiny house. Basically, people modify these transit vans into a small RV and travel with them. And they've been, like I said, camping in the parking lot.
What's the rest of the board say? Should we, can we wait two weeks? I know if I, for Joe's opinion. I'd just be curious what it specifically says. If there's a lot that's saying that camp zoning doesn't allow like camping or something, then why couldn't we enforce it? Randy?
So I'll just speak real quick. So whatever's in the bylaws for us to enforce, and I had this brief conversation with Eric, that it's going to have to be something specific. So if we go, if it says like no campfires or no whatever, we're going to need that, I'm going to need that copy on file. So what we would end up doing, whatever the bylaw says and whatever these people are doing, if they're violating that bylaws, my officers are going to have to know what that is. Tell the people you need not to do it. It's against the bylaws. States campfire, put it out. If they don't, then based on that, we can tell them, put it out or leave. They don't do either. Now we inform them that if they don't leave, you'll be arrested for trespass. So I'm going to have, we have it very specific. So the state's attorney can see what it is. So they can proceed with a charge if that's what we're going to do. Because that's the only way to do it. I'm not going to not sit here and do stuff like, and I hate to bring up the whole COVID and the mask thing, something that's not enforceable. It's got to be something that's enforceable. Right? And that the state's attorney will back this up on it.
So in the bylaw, recreational vehicle, travel trailer and tents, it shall be unlawful for any person to park a recreational vehicle slash travel, travel trailer or to erect a tent except in accordance with the following regulations. The non-commercial use, non-commercial use of recreational vehicles, travel trailers or tents shall be permitted on the specific approval of the landowner for camping not to exceed 90 days. So if they don't have the specific approval, Mount Snow, because they own that land, then they can't use their recreational travel vehicle for camping. This is enforceable by the same tickets that you guys were getting.
Civil rights, that's a civil violation?
Yes, civil violation. And fines. I don't know what, you know, you can't probably prosecute them, but under that, but if you only fine them, ticket might prevent them from coming back.
Potentially you're going to have to really look into it.
Well, and since it's Mount Snow's property, have they been advised that this is going on? Because there's huge liability as well.
No, I have not had the opportunity. Like I said, it was yesterday. So I apologize. I haven't had the opportunity to speak with Tracy. Our current agreement with Mount Snow is that we have purview over the parking lot, which is why I was thinking that we would handle the signs. But I will absolutely be in contact, I will be in contact with Tracy. I will finalize all of this, you know, the the backend stuff with Andy and we will come back, I guess, in two weeks and with a plan to put in front of you guys. That's a warned item.
Joe?
Love the fact we have a plan, but I'd like to put a plan in place if we could this evening by what Andy has said. So that Randy, I don't know what else Randy needs for comfort on this.
Okay, wait. I, I think that this is not an agenda item. This is a pretty high impact situation. And I think that if we want to do it before two weeks, we should have a special meeting. I don't think it's appropriate right here. And that's my opinion on it.
My opinion is we're taking the time to look at an issue that is coming for us at a meeting. I know it's not on the agenda, but it's been read that it's not allowed. Our police chief is here. We just have to authorize them not to allow people to do it. And we will put additional signage up once we have it in our place.
You too?
We'd have to notify Mount Snow, it's their property. We're acting on their property.
I, I agree with what Joe says with them. But I mean, if we had a special meeting, I would attend.
Yeah. I think it should be a warrant meeting because this is kind of new ground for us in one of the parking lots that we maintain for access to trails that Mount Snow owns. So I, I think that, that, I think it's just too much for tonight. We, it's not, it's not how, this, this is a very impactful thing to do. And I think we need to do it and think about it and not just throw something at it. I, I really, I believe that. And that doesn't mean we can't have a special meeting within a couple of days. So we could have it done for.
Have the parties and the information. It's going to involve Mount Snow to have within a couple of days.
Hold on, Andy?
I think you're right, Vicky. It just came to mind that under the zoning bylaw, the property owner would be ticketed. So we'd be writing tickets to Mount Snow for these people.
Yeah, it's a little bit more complicated than it is right now.
I was just going to say one of the things, since we have an agreement with Mount Snow about using the parking lot, we need to also define whether part of that is our responsibility for leasing that or not. So we need to get that in, we need to have that understanding very clear.
One last thing. So with that, until Andy read that, then the only other thing I would want, just about touched on, this is not Snow's property. This has to be something, I'm going to say legally, if it goes down that way, we have on file that Mount Snow is a property owner says that the town of Dover, there is their agents being able to enforce this. Because that goes as far as trespassing into private property and stores and stuff.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we need to put this together and do it properly. It's not going to happen tonight from quickly and do it right and understand what we're doing and involve Mount Snow in this as well. So Eric, can, can you work on that? And please don't. Dana?
Yeah, Dana. I'm just reading, because I have the bylaws up here. And it seems very simple. It says RVs and trailers or tents shall be permitted upon the specific approval of the landowner. So if Mount Snow is not giving these people approval, or the town of Dover is not giving these people approval to park in the parking lot, then it's enforceable. Because they don't have specific approval from Dover. They don't have specific approval from Mount Snow. What do you think of that, Randy?
Prove to me that they don't have at, say, midnight, that they, these people don't have approval to be there. I gotta have proof. We gotta have proof.
That would be Mount Snow, the owner calling.
I think, I think we're really just talking about a fairly short conversation with Mount Snow to align who's responsible or who's going take care of what. And from there, it's probably going to be very easy to resolve.
Right. All right. Are we going to move forward with this and get more information so that the board can make a decision about the hours and things like that as well? Yes, Scott? So I have one last comment. Eric, if, and maybe Randy can weigh in on this as well. If they're, the person who brought this, brought this to you went there this weekend and whatever, saw the people, and if they left garbage, could they then, I'm thinking of a way to deter them. Could they then be ticketed for littering, for littering? I mean, would that? I don't want, if it's not worth it, if it's just a pain and that's just causing more of like whatever, but if, if that, I don't know, a way to deter them in the meantime? Eric?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, Scott. I, I do apologize. I didn't mean for this, I know it's public comment. So I didn't mean for this to turn into a much larger conversation. But I, I think, like Sarah said, I think it's a short conversation. I can be in touch with Tracy very quickly. She's very responsive with our office. And once, once we have all that information, if it's in three days, then we make a decision about whether that meeting happens earlier. If it's not within three days, then we make a decision to do it on the 15th.
Joe?
The other thing too is Mount Snow may just take care of it on their own. They're aware of it because they have their own security that drives around. And they could be the ones stopping at the parking lot and telling them to leave. And Mount Snow could take care of it on their own possibly. Starting already.
Okay. All right. So let's get off from this. You and Eric and whoever else you need to discuss it with and report back to us. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments that aren't on the agenda? Laura, you're not on the agenda.
Nope. Here to stop in. Just about reportionment. Andy's here as well. Just to kind of give you a status update of where that's at. So I have been informed that now have been locked, that they are working on the language. I think that that can be changed if the town wants to change it bad enough. It means like working on all of the districts in Southern Vermont. Reebok has decided that they're done and accept the map that's been before. So wanted to update you on that. If you do really want to push for changes, it's going to be a big push and a lot of effort behind you. So right now, the district is Dover, Wordsboro, Jamaica, Stratton, Somerset. Let's let it stay that way unless the town push.
Does anybody have any comments about that while Laura's here?
If I run again.
And get, and get elected. Anybody have any comments? All right. Thank you, Laura, for coming. We will move on to the Highway Department now. Travis was asked to come back to us with a new schedule for various transfer station fees. And he has provided those. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? So do we have copies? There's a few copies up here. If anybody in the audience would like to get it. Basically, Travis is proposing the trash rate to go from $2.50 a bag to $4 a bag. The demo rate to go from $30 a yard to $30 a yard to 40. Appliances to stay at 18. Mattresses to go from $13 to $15 per mattress. Tires, various increases, depending on sizes. The, so that's, that's the proposed new fees. I had a question about what we were going to do with senior citizens. Because they get their punch card. Are we going to?
We can be the same.
Andy?
So you may, you may not remember this. This has come up. And so the state of Vermont has dictated that everybody needs to pay as you throw to incentivize recycling. Okay. So they have a problem with us not charging seniors per bag of garbage. Because then they have no incentive to pull the plastic out of their bag of garbage and put it for free in the recycle. So if you're going to change things, it, it hasn't been an issue. Everybody loves the fact that seniors get a discount. But if you're going to change things, you might consider charging a discounted rate to seniors per bag? Or doing whatever with it. The state would probably, you know, if they were going to come down and and give us a hard time, you know, they could, they could pick on us for that. But the view.
We're currently still offering them two bags a week.
Yes.
It does seem to go from zero to four per bag. Is that for some senior citizens, that would be $8 a week. Potentially, that's a pretty heavy increase with everything else going up as well. And there, I mean, social security did go up, but not very much comparison to everything else.
I suggest.
Hold on. Dan had his hand up.
I spoke with Travis about this and I asked about the fact that it's going from $2.50 to $4. Remember, the 50 cents was a problem with the change. Then I spoke to Marco about it and he said that we don't really lose any money on the trash and we, you know, we're okay with it. I think because of things that, you know, do cost more, you know, in the long run, or obviously transportation and so forth. Most municipalities get in trouble when they screw up on not plumbing the roads and charging people or leaving garbage on the streets, which we don't have to pick up yet. But I think if we went to something like $3 a bag for the people, it would be easier at the transfer station and it would show that we need a little more money. Because who knows what's going to happen, you know, in the future as the transportation costs go up.
So you're proposing to go from $2.50 to $3?
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments?
Sarah? Are we saying three for everyone except seniors and?
We haven't really talked anymore. We kind of went back to the basic thread here.
So I would, I would support keeping things level for seniors, however we're doing that.
Which is zero for two bags per week. After that, okay?
Which again, we're not supposed to be given. But I think if we're going to raise the rate, we could do a small just as we spoke about the fact that they would hopefully induce something, maybe do some recycling. They aren't already, but I think we should, not that I want to charge seniors, but that's what the state says and everywhere, every other dump you go to, there's a charge for seniors to dump. So.
Sarah, then Kevin?
I would just say if we, if we're forced into, and we have to charge them, I would say charge them adults.
Kevin?
I was just going to say, I think you could easily take the senior punch card of 52 punches or whatever it is and, and cut it in half. I think, you know, most seniors aren't going through waste the way families are. You're talking usually seniors to people and the seniors I know in my class are very conscientious source reducers. I mean, for COVID, I know seniors who wouldn't throw out more than 12 or 15 bags of garbage a year. So I don't think you're really hurting them by, by increasing them. And there is a lot to be said about keeping the price high to incentivize, incentivize the proper recycling of plastics and, and things as well.
Any other comments about this? So, we are, do we currently offer two bags per week for fifty-two weeks a year?
Or free for seniors.
So if we offered one bag per week or two for every two weeks for them? Is that, is that what you're saying, Kevin?
Um.
Cut it in half?
You know, I, I don't think it would really, really hurt them. I mean, right now, you know, most seniors don't pay anything. They just don't, you know? So.
Dan?
I don't think I've ever gotten pissed twenty bucks.
Okay.
As a senior.
In a year?
Mm-hmm. Twenty punches.
Um, what's other people, any other thoughts about the four dollars a bag for the, for regular non-seniors? Nobody? No comments? Jim?
Should those increases be posted someplace so you really get some comment of, besides, you know, twelve or eighteen people that might be attending this?
So are you suggesting maybe we should post it, um, that it's gonna, potential proposal, and revisit this at another meeting?
I'm not.
I mean.
So I'm not telling you how to drive this, but, you know, I think in the sense of fairness, probably ought to get greater comment rather than eighteen people. Probably two-thirds have not said anything.
Okay, um, other comments? Yes, Mike?
So I think it could be, so the town meeting, you have a bunch of seniors there, number one. I think cutting the bags from fifty-two to twenty-six is not fair. If in fact, after the twenty-six, after the one bag a week, they then have to pay four dollars for their second bag. I don't think that's fair. I think a better idea would be to cut the bag rate to fifty cents, and then if they bring in two bags a week, it's a dollar out of their pocket.
So they have a reduced rate?
Correct.
So there's a lot of input on this, a lot of different, it's been a long time since we increased the rate, hasn't it? How long do you think it's been, Andy?
We most recently decreased, no, that was the sticker cost.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so rate for bags.
Well.
Been a long time.
Been a long time, okay. Marco?
So I'll jump in too.
Everybody's very, very chatty tonight on it, yeah.
I know, I think nine dollars a bag sounds fair, and if the state is saying you have to have the act of paying per tip, then fifty cents a bag or a dollar bag and then keeps us legal, and I don't think it's excessive, and.
For seniors.
Yeah, for seniors, correct, so we're compliant, and it's not excessive, and maybe you posted a couple of weeks in the newspaper, you know, and say this is what's gonna happen. But, you know, everybody reads the paper.
Hey, Joe, did you have something else to say?
So my only thing to say to this is, I, you know, we talk about trash, we're obviously, you know, I don't know how we're doing financially in the trash business. I don't have numbers in front of me. I don't know what our ultimate goal is. Cause our ultimate goal is to make sure we cover our costs on just the trash or on our salads. We don't have a goal, we're just talking about this. If it was up to me, I would make it three dollars a bag and a dollar a bag for seniors. Be twenty dollars a year, and I would also raise the transfer fee for the, for the permit from seven dollars to ten dollars. So that would offset some of, some of the costs. It's a lot to start, but we're low, we wanna go up more on the bag, we're charging a lot. We charge a little bit more on the permit side, which we should already be in my retrospect. But again, maybe we should put it up one more time, let people know your rates are going up. Come out to the meeting, or then we'll just decide what we think is best. And it gives us some time to think and look at some numbers on what it's actually costing us. I don't know. I don't know as a taxpayer if I'm, you know, offsetting, you know, people that are going to the dump or not. Cause there's a lot of people that are not gonna be at all advisable on this dump, that already paid to have their trash picked up at their condos. So I don't think those condo owners are appreciative that our taxpayers are, they're not paying anything because they're not going to the dump. So I don't think we should have a big, where the taxpayers are paying and offsetting the cost, but that's my feeling. Love to have some other feedback on it, love to put it on this.
So, my understanding, this was on the agenda, one of the reasons, not, was tires. And the other reason was because other towns were lower than we were, and we were getting an abundance of garbage dumped at our transfer station, because it's one a drive-through, and our prices are cheaper. So, so I thought that that was the driving force why we had this conversation.
It's the true, that is a true statement.
So, these numbers you're proposing, are they in line with our surrounding neighbors? Who do not offer the drive-in service that we do, because I know, I've heard, you know, lines at the dump, or the transfer station can be long. And.
We still have one car, so in there at a time, which is, a, a lot of that could be alleviated.
Okay, so, I, I, I understand that, I understand that. Why this is, we're talking about this was because one, the tires, and two, was our prices are lower. How does this compare to, and I know, I know Kevin offered you that, you know, whole area math that shows you how much it is, so. Are we not competitive if we went to four?
I think, I believe so.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're still, we're not super high, as high as some of the others. We're not two fifty a bag like the low guys, you know, I, that's why I recommended four, but if you wanna do three, then you do three.
And how about the, the permits, the dump permits?
I left them the same.
Right, but so other towns are higher, right?
It varies. Some towns are doing, uh, instead of doing the permits, they're, they're doing a roll of bags or, you know, it, it just varies. A lot of towns, what I did find is a lot of towns are charging a lot for their permits.
Okay.
Upwards of twenty-five dollars just to get the sticker in your car.
Okay, and are those towns near us? And then I'm gonna go to Joe.
They're all around.
Okay.
One other thing is our next door neighbor town, they charge for a permit for trash or recycling. So we could be having an increase of people just coming through to recycle, and there's no permit for it.
No, you have to have a permit to recycle, I thought. I thought you had to have a sticker.
No.
Yeah, you do, you do, you do.
With a caveat that we're a center for recycling electronics.
Right, that's.
And anybody, anybody can do that, but otherwise, you're supposed to have a permit.
And this was brought up to us before, yes it was, and, 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 and was asked, so am I supposed to enforce? I think maybe even Travis asked it, or because people having permits to recycle. We talked about this in, in an earlier meeting.
So everyone has a problem. I still think it's retarded.
Sarah?
I'm just, when I'm on the Wilmington website, it's fifteen dollars for a permit sticker. And a three fifty per thirty gallon bag pays for. One.
Dan?
There's a soul song about the metal recycling.
Well, actually, it started with tires, and then it went to metal. That's the second part of this whole memo, so we need to move on what we wanna do with, with this. Do we want to get a propos- proposed rates out, change these suggested rates? Um, I've heard three dollars and one dollar for seniors. I've heard a ten dollar dump permit. I don't, I think that's probably easier than a seven dollar dump permit. Um, when do we want it to go into effect?
Well, we wouldn't do the permit until next year, cause it's.
To.
Whenever you want, I can do it. Just ring it in.
Can I just make sure I buy mine first before?
All right.
So, yes. Do we? I mean, should we post, the, the place to post the new pricing is at the transfer station.
Yeah.
Those are the people who are gonna care about it. So you post it for what, a month? See if you get feedback that there's a big problem with it, and if not, you go ahead. I don't think it has to be in the paper, literally, if it's at the, at the transfer station.
And on the town website and various other places we post things. So, if somebody wanna make a proposal, um, for the fees, and if it's as stated in, in Travis's thing, Joe, are you listening to me? If it's as stated, like appliances or whatever mattresses, then just say you, you wanna make these changes, and then the others as, as presented. Yeah, all right. You're gonna make that motion? I thought you.
Sure.
Okay.
I propose we charge three dollars a bag and then a dollar a bag for seniors. And everything else the same that Travis has proposed. All the way down to the trucking.
And, um, how about the permit? Did you want to?
Permit, yes, ten dollars.
And what is your motion saying for the date to start?
The date after I buy my dumpster. Starting.
July first.
Well, yeah, starting the next fiscal year, I work for you, Ian, sure, whenever you want. So it's in the next fiscal year.
So we have a three dollar per bag for regulars, it's one dollar for seniors, a ten dollar dump permit, and everything else is the same.
As proposed.
As proposed.
Now, are we gonna start the, the bag fee as of tomorrow, or are we waiting till July first or not? Just doing the permit.
The whole thing's July first, according to the motion.
Yeah.
Well, July first, why don't we start it now?
Well, I think, I think it's fair to give somebody a, a, maybe April first, if you wanna.
April first.
Do you wanna amend your motion?
Yes, I wanna amend it that's April first for all three of those categories.
Hold on, Jeanette.
So April first for everything, or April first just for the trash?
Well, for the permit and for the trash.
Per, ever.
This looks like it makes it.
So now it's April first for everything?
Yep.
Are you still wanting to second that amended motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to get this.
So is everybody clear? Okay, three dollars a bag and one dollar a bag, ten dollar dump permit, and all others as presented. Any other discussion? Sarah?
I would simply request that we post this as quickly as possible at the transfer station.
And on the website.
And on the website, so that people are informed as quickly as possible.
Not to amend the motion, but I think everything should be done by a dollar. Should be no more fifty cents of the dollar. Should be no change dealing out there anymore.
There, well, there should.
There shouldn't be, but he might say, I'm just sold it.
There's nothing in this proposal that is anything but a solid dollar.
I totally agree. I just wanna make sure Travis lets Chris know that there's no more like, that bag was not a two fifty bag. Should be one fifty cents. Like the idea mark on the line.
After April first.
Let's change for it.
And, yes. Okay, all right. Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Phew. Now the metal recycling.
Yes.
Okay, so scrap metal dumpster on average is dumped three to four times per year or as needed. Forty-yard dumpster can weigh an average of twenty thousand pounds. Current rate of unprepared steel is point five dollars per.
Five cents.
Five cents per LAV? Okay, it'll be, okay. So, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the rate we get back?
That's what the market rate is.
That's, I just wanted to.
Five cents a pound.
Okay.
The WTE weight rate, current market rate of trucking is twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars per dump.
We get a half a cent.
The rate is what, the rate, it reads, rate is what you're gonna get, so current market rate is what you're gonna get for your metal.
So if we have twenty thousand pounds of metal.
Yeah.
And then it comes, comes off from that.
Yep.
So a twenty thousand pound load, those, a thousand dollars.
Five, point five cents.
At five cents a pound.
Mm-hmm.
Is one thousand dollars.
Is that right?
Point oh five, two, one, 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 thousand.
I got the rate sheet.
It's a thousand dollars.
Add it up.
Point oh five? Okay, so five cents, five cents. It's not fifty cents, it's point oh five.
Five cents, it's not fifty.
So we get about a thousand dollars.
Right. It's cost us. Two hundred and fifty dollars to top it.
You can have less, you can have more.
Right, right.
This is an average.
Average, yeah.
Right.
Plus the price of the, of the war.
So, on average, we could net seven fifty, but then they have to bring the truck, bring it back, right? Is there a charge coming back?
And they will.
That's, that's return.
Okay.
That's the round trip.
Okay, so that's a seven hundred and fifty, on average, potential of income.
Income.
Okay. Right now, Steve Scrap Metal, um, there's no, he's not, not charging us, and we don't get any money. But he's taking everything.
Yep.
Okay, he's taking everything, including the refrigerants.
Yes.
So then there's the refrigerant, cause they can't take refrigerants.
Correct.
So then the refrigerant costs.
How much does that can cost to do?
If, we're, we're charging fifteen or eighteen dollars each for the companies, I've called three different companies and talked to them. I haven't heard anything more than ten dollars per unit. So basically, we came up with a staging area at the dumpster, we could just store them. Hire the company, once they get twenty-five, thirty of them, they come drain them, we get a certificate, they've been drained, they can go in that metal box.
Cause, cause we haven't been getting that. Certificate that's been done right now. From Steve.
Well, he, he just removed them from the property, so.
Yeah.
What he does with them is.
Okay, um, so. If we do this, we should more than cover our costs in.
It will cover, yeah. The cost, the fee of getting rid of the appliance at the transfer station will cover the cost of just proper disposal. No problem.
Joe?
I'll make a motion that we go back with George Napkin's son with trucking fee one eighty. And we'll take whatever we get for the other side. And we'll utilize a certified person to empty the refrigerator as of tomorrow. Let's see if the dumpster gets there.
Travis, you have.
Yeah, you have to wait until we get the, to get the dumpster back. Right, he's saying start tomorrow, I'm saying.
There's a lot of cross-traffic going on here, so please, come to me. You have room to stage these refrigerators and things like that?
I, I do for now. In the summer, I'll probably come up with something different, but I should.
Okay. Any other discussion about uh, the metal waste disposal and removal? Jeanette?
That's what it says on my paper, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
APK. Okay. So, we have a motion that is seconded, we have the typo clarification. Are we ready to vote?
Yes, just make sure, I, sorry.
Yes, Sarah?
That the motion, Joe said he wanted to start right away. It needs to start subject to availability of Apken returning that dumpster box.
He has availability to bring it by.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it could happen today. Steve could pull stuff out for a couple of days. I think Apken's gonna want them out.
So, and it, under this, would you, will you notify Steve that he can no longer? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow, okay, now we're gonna consider the health insurance coverage continuation for adult children brought up by the police department.
So, what ended up happening was is I have a child that's turning twenty-six uh, at the end of March. So it was my understanding back through, whatever you wanna call it, Obamacare or whatever it is, was that, um, kids could stay on until the age of twenty-six and then come back, so trying to help him look for insurance, so anyway, contacted, I looked on Health Connect, and in there, then I saw some stuff, so I actually called them, and they said that that's no more, well, it's no longer the case, they can stay on, um, a parent's plan uh, until the end of the calendar year. That's up to that. So, in talking to them, then, until the light bulb finally went off, and then realized I had called New Cross Blue Shield, so I contacted New Cross Blue Shield, um, being our provider, and they said that, yes, the dependent that turns twenty-six can stay on their insurance plan. Dependent that turns twenty six can stay on their insurance plan until the end of the calendar year. You know, until their, her word was terminated. So anyway, so then I've had a conversation with Jeanette, because they said that, you know, Jeanette was a person, so I contacted her because. Up there, they had no notification to terminate my son, either my words, but anyway, to get him off. So um, that's when I brought it up to Jeanette and she said that she didn't know and that we should bring it up. That's the short version of it, to see, and actually.
Yeah, uh, so this is the first time this has come up. Since I've been doing the insurance. Um, I think the last time actually was. Another employee and they were turning twenty six, we took them off because that was what they wanted to have done, so. Um, but I did not realize that it was sort of up to us, it's okay with Blue Cross Blue Shield if it stays through the calendar year. Was not aware of, so normally if they were turning twenty six, it was. But in this case, since Randy has a family plan, he still has a family plan, so there's really no change. As far as. Premium rates, right?
It would just be. H R, H R A money that might be paid out.
So it's.
So, but I, I also did some research and it, and yes, um, they can stay on through the calendar year. That is, that is allowed, um, it is kind of at the employer's discretion. So that would be, you know, another. Eight months or nine months or whatever the, uh, carrying. And, 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 and Jeanette is correct, in this case, it wouldn't change the, it wouldn't go to a two person plan necessarily, it would. There are instances where it could, if there, you had one dependent that was turning twenty six, then that would. That would save the town money. This one, it's, it's more. Depending on how much services um might have to be paid out through the H R A. So it's a smaller number than if it was, but I think we need, do need to be consistent, whether we do it. We do it for one, we have to do it for all, and so that could be. A, a dependent child that turns twenty six in January and you're on a, a two per, you're on a family plan. You might go down to be just a two person and that would save the town money for the rest of the year, along with the, any H R A.
So, and, so we do need to be consistent. And the fact that we wouldn't as a town, additionally, as myself sitting here. That, that is fine and looking out for the taxpayers that have been elected. As for the H R A, I find it hard to keep paying out of the H R A, because that is a taxpayer and that's something that do not have to keep carrying on. So again, talking about consistent, and this could be coming up and it could be very costly for the town. In certain circumstances, that's what I have to say, and I don't wanna go down a very slippery road. We do this, then we have to do it for all the next twenty six year olds and it could cost the town. So I wanna let the town, and if you've warned in public, so what we decide as a group here affects. Not just one individual, but quite a few as it gets up to that twenty six year old.
Well, I think it should be incorporated in the personnel policy, so that it, it is consistent. So I guess it is a bigger discussion uh than just here. Um, tonight, as a, you know, it's, it's kind of a, we weren't really all sure what this was all about. Um, so. I agree that it should be consistent, it, it, in this case, it, it really probably won't. Potentially couldn't, could cost a town very little, or it could cost us a lot, and in other situations, it could save the town. Quite a bit of money if a twenty six year old became twenty six in, say, January, and then we didn't have to pay for the uh. Larger group coverage for the rest of the year. So I think it's something we should revisit in another one. Uh, meeting, and we should, it should, whatever we do, we should put it in the personnel. Jeanette, thoughts?
Um, I was thinking, I don't know if you can separate. Coverage. The coverage from the H R A.
I think the coverage is the coverage.
I was thinking, cancel one without the other.
Yes, sir.
You could make it the responsibility of that individual to use in the H R.
I, I think it's a bigger issue on that and along, because it needs to be implemented universally across all employees, so. This case is, is. One case, there could be very different cases too, so, which would, could cost a town more money. So shall we get this warrant for another meeting? This is open to, I mean, all employees who would, would um potentially run into this situation. So. I think it's a, I, I don't wanna bring up anybody specifically, but you brought up somebody's without, yeah.
So just. So anyway, the other thing is if you're gonna move forward, um, you could make it like, say, your decision on the next meeting. Because then this way, I know, we know. Whether or not to, you know, look, because there is, you know, the other thing that they told me was, yeah, enrollment. For Health Connect is our goal.
Right, but.
However, there are special. But and there's, and there's times.
There's a sixty day window after.
Right, so, so there is that, so I need to, or we need to as a family.
Make decision.
To make a decision, because, I mean, yeah, I'll be honest, so he turns twenty six on March twenty second. So you got a meeting on the fifteenth, so I would like to go to make a decision by then, so we need to, you know, so we have a decision.
Yes, I think we, can we get it to the next, the fifteen agenda?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Unfinished business, we're moving on to the budget. We'll start with. The highway budget. First. Warrant is the highway budget first. Does everybody look at the most recent budget that was sent over? Okay. So the highway. Were there any besides sewage fees or anything major changes to this? Okay. So the highway budget is up two percent. Uh, from, it's up to one million five hundred thirty five thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety two cents. All of the. Salaries in the. Budget are in an eighty cent base increase for all employees, whether their salary. Or, or hourly, and then a three percent raise, so that it equates to most employees somewhere between. Five and a half and. Six point seven or eight, and so the lowest employee, they're getting the largest percentage raises.
Question on the budget that I received, it still, the police department salaries are all at eight percent for each individual, the one I received by email. So this one, this gives me, this just gives me. Sales, that's why I just wanna make sure that the computing was done right.
Under the, on page five, it says twelve percent, but that's another additional officer. Included. So it's a, a twelve percent. No, it's the aggregate is twelve percent. And also the uh, insurance goes up with an added officer, so there's. Well, there is the sub spreadsheet that has everybody's broken out.
So, under the comp. On mine, it has eight percent for each police officer, and then a number next to it. So I don't know if that's correct, I'm. Whatever she sent.
Yeah, but if you go over to the right.
I know, if you go further.
Scrolling, it's five point five, so that's a fluctuate, it's just. Five, yeah, more eighty nine, be five pounds.
Right here, right there. That was the proposed. So you go to the far, the next to the last one, it shows that they're between five and six, sixes.
Sure.
You don't see it?
Yeah, it's there, it, it.
Okay, well, we were talking about highway generally. So. Are there any questions about the highway budget? That shows everybody, all of our employees. You see?
Oh, yeah, I don't see, I see it on that page.
This, this is one of the tabs that feeds this on, on the Excel spreadsheet. Would somebody like to make a motion? To approve the highway budget? For one million five hundred thirty five thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and ninety two cents? Would you like to second that, Dan? Thank you. Any discussion about the highway budget? All in favor? We now have the operational budget, which is two million two hundred eighty nine thousand. Five hundred twenty two dollars and thirteen cents. That again has the same rate schedule for all employees. Um, it does not include. The warned articles. And there's several of them, and they total two hundred and seventy nine thousand eleven dollars, and these warned articles are. Um, appropriations to the Dover Free Library. The um, R S, no, for the gathering place. Uh, Sevins, which we warn every year as we do the library. Um, the Deerfoot Valley Rescue, which we warn every year. The S A S. Is an increase, so we warn that, and also a new request for the Southern Vermont Therapeutic Writing Center. So. If you add those in and we approve the operational budget. The total budget will be up four point nine percent this year. Um, at a, at four million one hundred four thousand dollars to, to one hundred four thousand two hundred fifty two dollars and five cents. So we have to realize this is gonna look in the town report like it's down two percent overall, but it really, if those appropriations are voted in. We're up four point nine percent. Everybody got that? Are there any questions about the operational budget? Uh, there is an increase in the select board pay. That was proposed. I also, um, we also had some public comment that we would want an attendance policy attached to that, and so as board members. Uh, if you want to increase the five hundred dollars per member, realize that, yeah, I feel it's our, our. Opportunity to put an attendance policy together. That. With that increase. So, I just want everybody to know that, uh, cause I'm not sure everybody was at that meeting. So, any other comments about the budget?
We haven't discussed the specific attendance policy.
No, but we, we can. Yeah, we can do that even before. Alright, do I have a motion to accept the operational budget for two million two hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred twenty two dollars and thirteen cents? Anything, all in favor? Okay, so that will bring that to three million eight hundred twenty five thousand two hundred forty one dollars and five cents. But again, there's two hundred seventy nine thousand, which could get added in because there were articles. Uh, next is to approve the town meeting date, location. And I had a subgroup.
So, um. Shannon reached out to Mount Snow, they're amenable to us having town meeting there again. Last year, we held town meeting on May eighteenth, a Tuesday, that Tuesday this year is May seventeenth. Um, I think that date would work great if you guys want it. If you choose that date, uh, we would need to warn town meeting. Um, at least thirty days in advance, so, you know, the beginning of April. Um, so it's a comfortable time to have everything nailed down.
Question?
Yes, Joe?
Is the school meeting this year in our town too?
It is.
Have they set a date for their?
Uh, they just did, last night, and they chose. The end of April, April twenty sixth, I don't have that. Um, it's, it's far enough ahead of our meeting that it's not gonna interfere with pre-town meeting. Yeah, I don't know, you guys have to decide if you wanna meet it at Mount Snow or the town hall. And, and when about you wanna meet, hopefully a date specific, that would be wonderful.
They made a date for April twenty sixth, where they, don't quote me on that, but yeah, it was the end of April. Mark's got his hand up.
Mark, yes, thank you.
Um, I believe it was May third.
Okay, alright.
Location, Mark?
Is it in the evening or during the day?
Seven P M.
So then we could still do. Pre-town meeting on the tenth. What do you think about doing it at the town hall?
I'm fine with doing it at the town hall with the way things stand currently with COVID, it's. Gamble, if COVID is an issue, it would be nice to have Mount Snow available. Um, you know, we have to warn it, um, if you choose the seventeenth of May, definitely by April fifteenth. So you could think about that and watch COVID. Uh, Mount Snow said it's available, it's not like they, they have bookings at that time of year. Um, you could put that off and see what COVID does.
Didn't, didn't Ma- Mount Snow just drop their mask requirements too?
That I don't know.
They dropped their mask requirements for inside of buildings, but they're still requiring, like, lead vaccination. And those employees were supposed to still wear masks.
Cause it would be nice to have it mask optional.
We could do that as it stands.
I think we should set a location tonight, I think it. And we, Mark, I mean, I haven't been to a ta- town, a school district annual meeting for a couple of years. How many people typically attend versus a town meeting? Do you, you know, no Andy?
Yeah.
Last year was about fifty.
Fifty at the. At the, the school.
Uh, Ward's Row.
Okay.
It alternates between Ward's Row and Dover a year. It was in Ward's Row, it was fairly well attended. Yep, I'd say Mark's right, fifty.
And at our town meeting?
Town meeting, I wanna say we had sixty, thereabouts. You know, which I was impressed with during COVID, changing the date and all that. Nothing special on the, the agenda to get people to come out, I was happy with that. You know?
Or are you all okay with May seventeenth?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any just comments about the location?
Slated optional until we have a.
Then we're gonna revisit this again.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello, Kevin?
Uh, no, I just wanna say, I think the whole reason we have a town hall is so we can host a town meeting. I think it's a wonderful tradition and we should try our hardest to maintain that. Just my thought.
Randy?
Does it make any difference that you usually, I'm just throwing this out there, that usually in your town report, it tells you where to report?
That's why.
So if you wait, does it make a difference?
That's a good point, Randy, so I wanna have stuff to the tenth.
Yeah.
But what I say, we gotta warn it by April fifteenth, I wanna have things to be printed right around that same time, probably. So, yeah, so beginning of April, you wanna make, you, you might have a month to make the decision, if you wanted to put it off. But if you wanna decide tonight, you know, like, give people more time to, to get word of mouth, of the location out, it's up to you.
Sarah? Well, if we're gonna make a decision, if we're gonna postpone the decision, we have until our next, our scheduled meeting before the fifteenth is the fifth.
And I am not here. I will not be here, I'm not even in the country that, so. Uh, I.
Sorry.
Shannon?
Hi, um, I don't know if this will play into your deciding, um, but Andy did have someone stop in and ask if the sixth grade fundraising luncheon bake sale, um, could happen at town meeting again. Um, typically, that would not be okay at Mount Snow. Um, I did reach out to see if they would allow that to happen, but I didn't hear back. Um, so it does look like the sixth grade wants to return to doing that for their class trip. Um, but I haven't heard from Mount Snow if that would be okay with them.
Eric?
So, wasn't part of the idea of hosting this at Mount Snow last year, specifically Corinthia, was the ability to open those doors and increase the airflow, you know, through the building for the meeting? If COVID is still a concern, I understand the tradition of hosting a town meeting at the Town Hall. Um, but if COVID is still a concern, that might be a consideration as well.
Sarah?
I think that, that having, being able to open the doors was a consideration, but more to the point was the ability to socially distance and still fit enough people in there. That was, that was actually the primary driver.
Keep going.
Hopefully by May, if we needed to have more social distancing, we could work outside. We had, that was the other reason for waiting, was that we would have the possibility of a better weather situation. And, so we could, we could have windows open or even have a, a tent on the front lawn, like the fire department used to do.
Tyler?
And the truth is, the most COVID option would have been to hold it today by Australian ballot. I think, uh, today has passed, has really. And with, you know, COVID numbers tend to drop, at least in northern U S in the summer. I think now that today is coming on and we're not doing it by Australian ballot, but there's really not much a point of worrying about COVID taking anymore.
Okay. Um, I don't think our town really seriously considered Australian ballot, um, in our discussions. We always were looking to have an open public discourse and discuss things. Um, make motions from the floor, be able to amend things. So, that part, putting it all, we do vote for our officers in Australian ballot method, but the rest of the meeting was never, I don't think that it crossed my mind that we couldn't hold a in-person meeting. If we, if, by moving into the spring, gave us lots of options. So, to be safe, should we do it one more year at Corinthia and just see where we go, have it planned? We have the option of, you know, there's a lot of outdoor space if we want to. Um, maybe we'll get a lot of people out, and it certainly can accommodate more people on the floor. Um, there's a lot more space to move around. And it is very generous of Mount Snow to offer it. Yes, who's up first? Mark?
So I wanna apologize, um, Andy was right, I looked at my calendar, it was April twenty-sixth, um, the school district meeting.
So the actual school district meeting is twenty-sixth at the Dover Town Hall at seven P M?
Correct.
Okay. Now, who else has got their hand, Kevin?
No, I just wanted to say in hindsight, one of the benefits for having the actual town meeting today on town meeting day is some people actually get the day off so they can go to town meeting, and those people may not be able to attend April twenty-sixth. It's just, hopefully COVID won't do this to us again, but, uh, I don't know, it's, it's just something we should have considered.
Andy?
So, uh, you know, there's no way to make a right decision. There, there really is. Uh, you just do the best you can. And I think that, um, I think that I would recommend for you to decide, uh, to hold it at Mount Snow. Just in case, um, we're in a position where that building could make a big difference, um, for voter participation. Um, it probably won't matter, uh, but it could. And, uh, Mount Snow's offered it generously for free, so I, I don't see why we shouldn't do it one more year there. Um, and, uh, and I appreciate, you know, the concerns about changing the date. Um, I appreciate the concerns about not utilizing, um, you know, the Australian ballot. Um, and, and you're just, you're weighing, you're weighing risk and you're weighing participatory democracy. And you, there's no way to get it right. Uh, I think you've done an excellent job both last year and this year considering this. And, uh, and I commend you folks for your decisions, and that's my recommendation.
Joe?
So, uh, I, I agree with Andy, hopefully it wouldn't be any reason that people would say they wouldn't wanna come out because the building is smaller at the Dover Town Hall for this year coming up. And if things are still really good, I don't think there would be an issue with the Dover Elementary School maybe helping out with the lunch, that we may have to give some money to Mount Snow for the lunch, but the Dover Elementary School could help serve the lunch or clean up after lunch or do something so we could have that tradition come back to, that Shannon was bringing up. So that is an option too, that we could look at. Or we could do a small, just maybe some wraps or sandwiches or a box lunch, and we could do it. So that would hopefully maybe turn out more voters because they would be getting
Free lunch.
Free lunch. And we can shift to your purposes.
I mentioned this to Mickey, um, privately, I think earlier today, that I recommended holding town meeting on weekend. Because there's a smaller chance of work kind of interrupting, um, the chance of participating in town meeting. Um, I, I think that would increase, I, I'm one of those people who want all elections to be like national holidays to begin with. I think that having, um, really chance of work, and then, I mean, you're giving free lunch, should have had in, no work and free lunch, okay? I mean, I get one.
Sarah? I think assuming that a weekend is gonna have more people not working than a weekday in a resort community is maybe not the same, where we, I think there's a lot of people around here who are working weekends. So, I don't know that we really have that many more people with free time on Saturday than we do want to.
All right. Any other comments? Does somebody wanna make any kind of motion? Sarah?
I make a motion that we hold town meeting on Tuesday, May seventeenth at ten A M at the Corinthia Base Lodge.
We have a second?
We have, that will maybe do something with lunch.
Until we know what Mount Snow's gonna say, I won't look at that as part of the.
I'm sure they'll let us do them. We, we.
I don't think that needs to be a motion.
No, it doesn't have to be in the motion.
We can just.
So if you wanna, if we can get the second, then we can talk about, you know.
Second.
I'm not, I don't, I don't, I doubt that Mount Snow would care that they sold cookies and cupcakes and things like that. And the town gives them a flat rate, so it doesn't, you know, it really doesn't matter what they serve. Uh, they could serve bowls of chili potentially, I'm sure Mount Snow will be accommodating to allow our sixth graders to earn some money.
Right, or we could do lunch, like I said, and they could help on that side.
Yeah, if Mount Snow wants to do that.
You can ask.
Yeah. Maybe they can set something up outside of the pen. So.
We can work.
I don't think that that should be the decision maker in a, where we do our town meeting.
No, that's your meeting, so you can warn it, just like a select.
Got it, okay. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Amendments? Thank you.
Now, I have a question about the afternoon.
Okay, so hold on, we're getting to the ring.
Okay.
That's our next item. That's where we're at right now. So the question on the warning, um, the next thing is for us to approve the town warning, which this year is uh, twenty articles, including a journey, um, which is pretty typical. Sarah, you have a question?
Um. Aren't there two select board seats up there?
I think you're right, Sarah, we should at least address that issue before you sign it.
What about, is there only one school director?
I believe there's only one school director.
Did I just ask Mark color? Mark, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
So we just have one, like, every three, every year for a three-year position for the school directors now?
For, for now, yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's one from Dover and one from Ward's Row every year.
Three years, so they're all three-year positions?
Yes, they are.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we should have a select board member for a three-year term and a select board member for a two-year term? We only have the three-year on the warning.
That's right, yes.
So we're gonna add that.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean we can't approve this tonight and, as, as it will be amended, and then we can stop in inside.
Um, yes, um.
What is it about tonight?
Well, one thing, I'm off my game, the whole, uh, digitizing land records, I think, has been a little crap. But, the other, the other issue might be my salary. Um, between Jeanette and I, I had emailed her the original warning, which had my salary with your original, um, COLA amount added to it, three percent. Um, so, I tried to fix that, and I don't think I did the math the same way Marco did, because I didn't come up with the same numbers he did for the budget. So I, I'd like to talk to Marco and come up with the correct number for my salary before you sign that. Or, you know, uh, you could make a motion to sign it, and it's as is pending, you know, Marco and I putting our heads together, you know, telling me what number it is.
So, the number he's got in this spreadsheet here
Yeah.
um, is the same that's on, as a, no. It's not.
No, and, and I don't know, like, I, three percent, and then eighty cents or eighty cents, and then three percent, or I
So.
I couldn't talk to Marco today, and I'd like to talk to him before I finalize that.
The number that's in the budget?
Yes. Is that correct? I don't know. But the budget's not as important, because you can have it over and not spent.
Right.
What's important is what's on that form.
Run down to my laptop to make sure, I have it at seventy oh thirty-nine, sixty-one.
That's, yes, that's what is in the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So that is probably the same thing, the eighty cents per.
I, I just got my calculator up, took it, added three percent, and then added the eighty cents.
The other way around.
Yeah, the eighty cents, and then.
That's the difference.
So you can stick Marco's number in there then.
Yeah.
And.
And that's how it's been calculated for everybody else.
Okay.
So that number.
We'll, we'll, I'll show you.
Yeah. We can talk about.
Hold on, hold on, we got chaos going here. So we're gonna change this warning to seventy thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yeah.
Oh, three nine point six one. Okay, so, any other amendments to the warning? Okay. So we're gonna add a two-year select board term and change Andy's salary.
And we're gonna change the location.
Yes. The correct date is in here.
Maybe we should move back to September.
Okay, and we're at Corinthia Base Lodge. So all those amendments. Are we sure we're good?
Definitely. Are we, are we trying to do something about, like, um, with the like, attendance stuff, would that, would that be something that we'd mention here?
No, we're gonna create our own person, our own board policies.
It's gonna be on the committee for that too. He's brought it up.
That, that wouldn't go in this, this, no, no, no.
He can propose.
Those are saying, we're gonna go to there, or.
Or you can also.
We'll, we'll, we'll have our own discussions about that, and we're gonna talk about that at town meeting too. Um, so, somebody wanna make a motion that we are now having our town meeting on the, on May seventeenth at Corinthia, that we're electing two select board members, and that we're paying Andy seventy thousand dollars in extra, and few dollars extra?
So, I'm, I'm gonna amend, because I made the motion already.
Right.
I just need to amend it to include the fact that we are adding a two-year select board, two-year term select board elector to be elected, and that the town clerk's salary is now seventy thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yeah, second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh.
Yay, okay. We're done with the unfinished business. We're gonna move to independent, to economic development. Eric?
Hey, guys. So. Uh, to start, I would like to introduce you guys to Bethany Leclair, who is the new director of the Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley Chamber of Commerce. She started a couple of weeks ago and is here tonight to say hi and to talk to us about fireworks.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you, everybody, I appreciate the time. Um, I just wanted to take a few minutes to, uh, introduce myself and share a little bit about my background, um, and then give you a quick update on the chamber before we talk about fireworks. So, um, and you can hear my dog's barking in the background, so please excuse them. Um, I have about, uh, you know, over a decade of nonprofit experience, I was really excited to take on this role and, and utilize my um, prior experience in fundraising and community engagement and vent planning. Um, I'm, it's, it's a great opportunity and everyone's been really welcoming so far. Um, we, the chamber is gearing up for their, the traditional six events that we have over the course of the year. Um, and as always, we've appreciated your support, um, in many of those events in different ways. Um, we're, we're revamping a lot of our communication styles so that you all feel like you're better informed on what's going on. Um, and I've been spending a lot of time, we'll continue to do so, meeting with businesses to get feedback on how the chamber can serve everyone um, in a meaningful way so that we can support success. So, um, I thank you all for welcoming, welcoming me, welcoming me so kindly so far, and I can't wait to meet you all in person um, over the course of the next couple of months.
Great. Anybody have any comments or questions for Bethany, she's just getting going? Thank you for coming, thank you for hanging around for such a long time.
That's right, it's been an interesting conversations.
Great.
So.
No, go ahead, Eric, that's what I was just gonna say.
Okay, so the, the chamber has. Okay, so the, the chamber has submitted an application to the event sponsorship program for the annual Independence Day fireworks. Uh, Shannon and I have both reviewed, um, and we are both in support of the application and the event. So you'll notice, um, and Bethany shared with us, uh, the, the, the cost of the fireworks has. Actually risen quite a bit. Um, so we, we never used to pay even anywhere near that ten thousand dollar minimum that the fireworks companies are actually charging now. Um, so even with that increase, this is the same amount that the chamber typically asks for to host that event.
And the Wilmington is being asked of for fifty-five hundred dollars?
Uh, I believe we asked Wilmington for sixty-five hundred. Which they approved. Make sure I have the right number.
Okay.
Yeah, sixty-five hundred.
And they've approved that?
Yes, they have.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions about the fireworks? Sarah?
So that just means that only, basically Wilmington is contributing thousands towards expenses beyond the fireworks themselves.
Yeah, yes, so um, in addition to the cost of the fireworks for the event, we pay um, police. Uh, the police department a, a fee for helping us with traffic control and um managing the crowds and just making sure everyone stays safe. Um, a- along with kind of a variety of other things, but some of those funds will go back towards the police, the cost of the police, um, support.
Thank you. And so everybody knows these fireworks are planned for July second?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the request of forty-five hundred dollars for the. Um, Chamber of Commerce fireworks for July second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, okay. Next item is the discussion of the Hathaway Trail.
Uh, so I received a phone call from um stump jumper board member and concerned resident Mike Garber. Um, regarding our decision to table the conversation about repairs on Hathaway Trail. Uh, the, the last we had discussed this, we decided that until we had a larger discussion about the. Potential uses and authorized uses of said trail, uh, we would not be making the repairs. To the trail and Mr. Garber was seeking an update on where we stood with that and what our plans are moving forward. Mike, does that cover what you were looking for?
When you say we, are you speaking for yourself and the board? Who, who is the we that? That took the permission for us to maintain the trail?
The board. Voted to withhold the ten thousand dollars, so we had a larger um discussion. We asked if the trail would be okay through the winter, I remember this and I actually looked at the minutes. Um, and the video, um, and so everybody, and there was a member of the stump jumpers here who we checked with. And they thought that it would be fine through the winter, and so we haven't done anything through the winter in terms of. That, so it was, it was hap, that happened, I believe, October nineteenth, if I can remember. Um, so, um, yes, that happened in October.
Okay, so since then, that member of the board that you spoke with is no longer with the stump jumpers and we'd like to reopen the discussion. For the upcoming uh summer and, and fall season.
It, it was to ta, it was, it was a temporary till, till we regrouped and. Uh, yeah, I think people have been pretty busy, but we certainly, uh, Eric will speak to. How we plan to move forward, I think we do need to have some public meetings with all stakeholders on Hathaway Trail, so. Uh, Eric?
Moving forward with this piece of it, um. Because this larger conversation is needed and recommend, a real recommendation about the uses of that trail slash road have not been made to the select board. Um, that it's, it's a discussion that needs to happen in Trails and Rec. And be put in front of the select board with the final decision as to, as to how we will be moving forward with. Um, you know, that process and any repairs on Hathaway Trail, that's my opinion.
And I think Hathaway Trail is a unique situation too, because there's people who. May have ride horseback on that trail, may do a lot of different things on that trail, so I think there's a lot of. So I would encourage the um Trails and Rec Committee to have a, a broad community meeting about it, if possible. Eric?
And, and, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of repairing trails that are in need of repair, that's not. That's absolutely not the issue here, it's, it's that the initial discussion about the repairs to Hathaway Trail. Opened a much larger can of worms than we initially anticipated in terms of motorized use and other uses on the trail, so until that. Until that final discussion is had and that recommendation is made to the select board, the decision was made at that October meeting. To table this, this item.
When I brought it up to put it on the Trails and Rec agenda, you told me to bring it to the select board. Now are you telling me to bring it back to the Trails and Rec Committee?
Eric, could you, can you address that? I, I don't, I don't know that conversation.
I just, I don't. I, I offered to bring it to Trails and Rec and you wanted to bring it to the select board, you wanted to have an open and public meeting with the select board about Hathaway Trail.
And the Trails and Rec Committee made a determination for wheel drive traffic. Specifically Jeeps and clubs that, that uh tell Jeeps to use Hathaway Trail. To shut down the Jeep traffic, or is it something that's gonna be decided here at the Select Board?
Sarah?
Isn't it usually the process that the Trails and Rec makes the recommendation of the Select Board and then the Select Board makes the determination?
That is the correct.
That's, it has to pass through Trails and Rec.
That's, that's, just so you guys, that's the new, cause we have a Trail Rec that was the previous couple of years before the Trail Rec, yes, I guess that's.
In the last.
Okay.
Whatever, two years.
Yes, that is the way that it's, it's gonna happen. This is a large, uh, you know, a, a large usage, multi-usage trail, and so. I wanna make sure that when the Trails and Rec group look at it, they look at it from all perspectives of the people who are using it. Because it is, it's more of a highway than our, our, some of our typical trails are. Is that a, a bad? Kind of description of it, it seems like it's more of a trail highway.
I don't know.
Yes, yes, Eric?
Yeah, yes, so. The, the Trails and Rec Group is, committee is, is formed. With an eclectic group of people for a reason, it's so that when we're looking at any types of these projects. That there's no one interest group that is focused on pushing projects through into the select board. So there's a reason that the, the committee is set up the way it was set up. And the decision-making goes the way that it goes, so. Again, Mike, I apologize that there was some confusion there, you, you wanted an explanation as to what happened and what got that money tabled. And I said that decision came from the select board, at which point we decided to put this issue back in front of the select board. As far as moving this item forward, it would need to go through that Trails and Rec Committee or recommendation is made to the select board.
Just to be clear, the money is not the issue. Maintenance on the trail is not the issue, everybody wants the trail maintained, they don't want it maintained for Jeeps.
That's what precipitates.
Have to go back to Trails and Rec to discuss it, I don't have a problem with that, but that, that issue is gonna come back in front of this board again, just to work with.
Okay, that the Jeep trail and that the money that they wanted to put. Into it did precipitate that conversation, you are absolutely correct, because that would seem like it. It, that was over and above what this, we had ever envisioned that it was becoming a caravan. Um, so, yes, we need to, we need, we need to have it maintained, it's been used for many years for a, as a valuable part of our. Snowmobile trail network, a lot of other trail networks, so we do wanna do that, but we wanna do it properly. And we will move forward, I, how is the trail holding up this year? Is it, is it, do they?
With all the rain, just the rain washes down the trail.
I know, I know.
It needs to be maintained.
Yes.
We will bring it to the Trails and Rec Committee and we'll go from that.
And specific, specifically the major mud hole that was part of the whole conversation, has that, has that deteriorated? Uh, I mean, that was, that was one of the main reasons why that Jeep group that was interested wanted to get that. Major hole.
That major hole does not affect snowmobiles.
And that's.
And, and, and we could work around that, that mud hole and maintain the rest of the trail. Uh, but some conclusion has to happen before the whole trail.
Right. Mark?
Uh, so two things, um, one, uh, since I own a fair amount of that land on Hathaway Trail, I'd like to be part of this conversation. But also I have pulled um two Green Mountain Power vehicles. Um, out of uh two different mud holes that they couldn't get out of, um, so Green Mountain Power needs to be part of that conversation as well.
So again, all, all the potential stakeholders in this, um, should really be involved. In, in where the maintenance goes and also, um. If the Jeep trail situation. Where it goes, I mean, we don't want it to be a Jeep trail highway, I don't think. I don't know, maybe we do, but I think that we need to talk, talk about it.
You're not here to ask.
Eric, do you have a contact at Green Mountain Power that you could arrange or ask them to attend? The next Trails meeting and put this on the agenda?
Uh, I don't have that contact, I can get it, um. It's gonna be a long meeting Tuesday night, cause we already have a full agenda, but we will, we will add it.
Eric, I can give you the phone number of somebody to contact, cause it's not, it's not the local GMP office.
That would be great, thank you, Mark.
Sarah, is this an issue that you wanna see resolved in the next week and a half, or could it take a little longer? So perhaps it could go on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, we're nearing the end of the snowmobile season and I understand your concerns and, and I understand, but I think that we, we can. Know that it's a priority that we will, okay?
Looking to help everyone.
Yep.
Including Green Mountain Power and anyone else that uses the truck.
But I.
Yeah, and if we have a little bit longer time, we probably have a better chance of getting Green Mountain Power to come. If we hit them now and ask them to come.
So, yes, you, you, we will be readdressing Hathaway Trail. Anything else about Hathaway Trail? Alright, we're gonna enter into the Board of Liquor Control if I can get a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to go into the Board of Liquor Control? Alright, so we have a first and third class license for outs, and outside consumption permits. For the permitage in LLC.
I make a motion that we approve the first and third class licenses and outside consumption permits for the permitage in Vermont LLC DBA permitted yet.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I must said, I had some uh questions for the permitage.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a second class license for a nice. LLC Snow Mountain Market.
I make a motion that we approve the second class license for a nice LLC DBA Snow Mountain Market.
Do we have a second? Joe seconded? All set for Snow Mountain Market? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control?
What, Jeanette's shaking her head.
What?
Okay, so you first you voted unanimously and then Dan said he was refuting himself, so you're saying.
So you refuse, so we had, we had four oh and one. Okay. Did we come out of the Board of Liquor Control now?
Sure.
Yes, okay, alright, now let's at the consent agenda, we have the minutes of February fifteenth. Twenty twenty-two, well, I don't know, I gotta check who was there. So the fif, February fifteenth, everybody was here.
At the, at the Zoom meeting, no.
No, that was the sixty.
That was the sixty. Okay, alright, so, um, uh, February fifteenth, the entire board was here. Any, anybody make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February fifteenth.
Second. Any changes or cha, updates? All in favor? And then we have the select board meeting, uh, the Bytown Select Board meeting with Wilmington on February sixteenth, and these are dated the fifteenth. And we need to change to the sixteenth. And then, um. Scott was not there. The vote for Wilmington was four in favor of the Bytown marketing money and one opposed. And that is not how it was reported here. Okay, so now it's four voting in favor and one opposed, that being Congress Gerald. Okay, so we have the date changed and that changed.
So make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second. All in favor? Okay. We have FYI Trails and Rec Committee meeting, sounds like it's gonna be a long one, uh, for. Oh, the warrants, sorry, the warrants, approve the warrants from, for February nineteenth for one hundred ninety-five thousand sixteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Some move.
Any thing, these were emailed to everybody last week FYI, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, FYI Trails and Rec Committee meets uh the eighth of March at six thirty. It sounds like it's gonna be a long meeting anyway, and the Planning Commission meets on March fourteenth at six thirty. And I would also like to get on next uh agenda, which is March fifteenth. Um, Planning Commission, um, members, um.
Appointment.
Appointment, possible appointment. Just planning commission, membership issues, I guess. Uh, any liaison reports?
Uh, just that we have an employee that is now working in the Assessor's Assistant.
Excellent, any feedback?
Working out well so far from where I can tell from our.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? No, okay, we're gonna go into executive session for personnel of Randy Johnson, thank you all for coming.